... place the two thirty twenty five. Give it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Our nation is under God, in the visual liberty and justice.
All right, Elton's government is open.
You're talking.
Yes, I don't know. Welcome everyone to the October first meeting. Minutes of the September seventeenth meeting, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a discussion on the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the financial report, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we had a couple of things on our discussion, the Elk and Northeast Rivers Watershed Association. We were gonna do the contribution of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So I need a motion to approve that. Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the donation going to the E N E R W A contribution of fifty three hundred and fifty dollars that we took discussed last, uh, last meeting? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, we have a bear three minute express car wash, we have an application for the reduced water and sewer rates. Tyler, did you give us, did they meet the requirements of the recycled reclaimed water usage?
Uh, yes, the application is, uh, under the doing business as named Bear Three Minute Car Wash, um, owner of the property, uh, three thirty three Plastique Highway LLC. Application is complete, um, and all, uh, requested I had were provided, the only one thing I'm new here is because the recycling system has been installed and in operation for in excess of twelve years. The business owner was not able to locate the original, um, documentation associated with the purchase and installation such as invoices, you know, work orders, things of that nature. However, in place of that, he did provide photographs of the actual installed system on his location, uh, in place of those documents. Which, you know, I'm, I'm understandable that more than twelve years ago, you can't, you know, they don't maintain their business records, the original images of purchasing system exactly.
Very good, you feel comfortable?
I do.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve the application for the reduced water and sewer rates, uh, for the bear three minute express car wash? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Gene, I'm still a little ahead of schedule here. Can we, do you have enough time to do, we'll probably have to do resolution, uh, Andy, we're gonna do yours in a minute. Uh, Gene, can we move forward with the ordinance six dash twenty twenty five?
Yes.
All right, you're on.
Ordinance.
Ordinance six dash two oh two five, amending the Elton zoning ordinance article twelve supplemental use regulation section thirty-three for medical use in the T U C zone.
Um, I believe I explained last time, uh, what this is doing is expanding an area that would permit, uh, medical use in the town, uh, town center zone by, uh, including the, um, city block that were currently situated, currently located on. The Elton planning commission approved this, uh, made a recommendation to approve this amendment at their last, um, meeting of, uh, on September eighth.
Very good, no additional issues, no comments?
Initially recommended approval.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve ordinance six dash twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on ordinance six dash twenty twenty five? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Gene, you're on for the six oh five, we advertised resolution nine dash twenty twenty five, the C D V G application for the Casa project.
So the community development, Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a federally funded program designed to assist county and municipal governments of activities directed toward neighborhood revitalization, housing opportunities, economic development, and improved public facilities and services. Um, this year, the state was awarded um, a total of seven million four hundred and sixteen thousand and five hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, that is divided up, uh, between state administration of two hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars, technical assistance seventy-four thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Community development projects, six million dollars, and special projects, one point nine four six four, uh, million dollars. One four, one million ninety-four thousand sixty-four dollars. Just gonna make that big guy. Those type of projects that they will fund, um, it's benefit to low mod income persons for a variety of, uh, types of, um, projects such as acquisition of real property, uh, construction, reconstruction, and installation of public works facilities, we've done recently, well, since I've been here, we've done four water towers and, um, other public improvements, um, utilizing that, including ADA compliance. Um, uh, assistance to neighborhood based nonprofit organizations, um, through the variety of, of topics that they will cover, um, that I was required to state at this public hearing. So what we have before you is, um, a request for funding to assist with the development and construction of, um, interim housing for youth that are aging out of the foster care system. And the request for funding, uh, is eight hundred thousand dollars, which is the maximum. And, um, I believe the project, the total cost of the project is three million.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, thank you. Um, the, the folks from Casa are here and they can answer any questions. Um, the, the grant is pretty much complete, there may be a little bit of tweaking before we send it in, um, on October twenty fourth. For the, that's the unit, uh, for submittal to the grant application.
Very good, uh, Lou, do you wanna read the resolution in for the record, or you want me to read it? Or do we need to read it? I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution R nine dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton approving the application submission to the State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Whereas State of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program. And whereas the town of Elton is eligible to apply for funds from the Maryland Health, the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program through Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And whereas the mayor and commissioners have held the required public hearing related to the formation of the town of Elton Block Grant Application. And whereas the mayor and commissioners understand and acknowledge that they would be responsible for completion of grant activities and any correct actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton authorize the submittal of the application for the Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars this first day of October twenty twenty five for the following project. Casa of Elton interim housing project for youth aging out of foster care. Be it resolved that Mayor Robert J. Aldit is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for this submission of the application. Do we have a motion, is this a public hearing?
It's a public hearing, so.
Okay.
Solicit.
All right, well then I'm gonna go back a little bit, I didn't have that really written down here. So this is a public hearing and we did open up the public hearing at six oh five. All right, do we have anyone that's, uh, would like to say anything for or against this resolution R nine twenty twenty five?
Is there people from Casa here?
Yes.
They should speak in favor of that.
Just, if you would stand up and state.
Yeah.
If everyone could stand and I'll count how many there is here for Casa. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve people in favor. And there's a handful online, thank you, it's well noted in the record, thank you all so much.
Very men teach.
All right. So now it is six ten, this public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R nine dash twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, let's get this grant. Side of that one. All right, Gene, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, can I keep you there and I'm gonna bring Andy up to do the other one? You're good, Andy, come on up, let's do ordinance, uh, I mean, resolution eight dash twenty twenty five. So I'm on a time schedule at six fifteen for you, I now I know it's a public hearing. We advertised at six fifteen. Okay, Andy, tell me a little bit about the town reemployment back, uh, vacation accrual policy, we talked about it last week or a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
So if you give us the highlights.
Uh, so this, this, uh, resolution, um, will add to the policy, um, for in the event, on a rare occasion, we have an employee that retires, resigns from the town of Elton. And, um, has a good work history, is eligible for rehire, and if they're hired within five years, we have a special, um, uh, vacation leave accrual, um, uh, kind of a setup to address, um, recognizing their past years of good service with the town.
Very good, any questions from anyone on the board?
Well, I think we went over it real well in the last time.
Thank you.
You did a good job putting it together.
Thank you.
We did, do we have a motion to approve resolution eight dash twenty twenty five town reemployment vacation accrual policy?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on it at all? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
That you're it.
All right, you're not on yet, Gene, you're not on.
Sorry.
Sorry.
All right, Lou, you got a proclamation forty-nine dash twenty twenty five Elton High School Alumni Day?
Yes, uh, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton, uh, to the Elton High School alumni, which includes names. Uh, whereas Elton High School located at one ten James Street, Elton, Maryland, that was established in nineteen fifty-eight. Whereas Elton High School has grown from a small, small school of twenty-five classrooms to multiple stepwise learning centers that educate young men and women today while preparing them for tomorrow. And whereas sixty-seven years, thousands of young people have passed through the doors on the path to adulthood. Whereas Elton High School alumni routinely reunite to connect with those who share a very special time in their life by honoring the memory of those who have passed. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton, hereby extend our sincere welcome home by providing an annual day of reunion for all Elton High School alumni. And furthermore, under the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Elton, hereby declare the first Friday of October of every year as Elton High School Alumni Day.
Very good, do we have a motion to accept proclamation forty-nine dash twenty twenty five Elton High School Alumni Day?
So moved.
We got a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion, we've got, uh.
How many?
I think we got a couple, uh, Elton alumni here, this is good. How many alumni is in here, there you go. Now, I was, we got two from Bohemia Man.
One who made the motion, you know.
That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking forward to Friday night, that's gonna be a nice event. All right, Gene, it is now six fifteen and, uh, we have a public hearing on resolution ten dash twenty twenty five, the enter, enterprise zone redesignation for approval, can you give us, uh, the details?
Certainly, every so often, uh, the county will, um, request from the town, uh, it's, we are interested in expanding our enterprise zone. Enterprise zone is a special, uh, tax credit area for, for, um, properties that will be to encourage development of their job-related, um, type businesses. Things that will, that will spur economic development, further economic development. And so, uh, in speaking with Sandra Edwards from the county, um, she had discussed a couple of different properties that, um, that we, you mayor, had, had recommended, uh, who include, would expand our enterprise zone area. There are two properties on Maloney Road, um, and one property, well, the number of properties, it's the heirs, uh, tract of land that incorporates a number of, uh, properties off of, um, Bell Hill Road. I have maps here for anyone who wants to look at it, but this will expand our enterprise zone to these areas, I believe the county council has already approved this.
They did, they approved it, yes. Okay, this is a, um.
Yep.
Did you want me to read the?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Uh, resolution of the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton to support the redesignation of the existing enterprise zone within the town of Elton and generally relating to the use of enterprise zones to promote the retention and expansion of businesses in the town of Elton. Whereas Maryland's enterprise zone tax credit program is a joint effort between the state and local governments to provide tax incentives to businesses and property owners located in economically distressed communities. And whereas the town of Elton desires to continue the existing enterprise zone, will allow existing businesses in the town of Elton and prospective new businesses to utilize these incentives. And whereas the primary benefits to businesses that are located within an enterprise zone are eligible for local property tax credits and income, state income tax credits. And whereas eligible businesses in an enterprise zone may claim a ten-year credit against local real property taxes on a portion of real property improvements. The credit is eighty percent of the assessment increased during the first five years. The credit then decreases ten percent annually thereafter to thirty percent in the tenth year. Whereas eligible businesses in an enterprise zone may claim one-year or three-year credits for wages paid to new employees in new positions. The general credit is a one-time one thousand dollar credit for new worker. For economically disadvantaged employees, the credit increases to a total of six thousand dollars per worker distributed over three years. Businesses may claim the enterprise zone income tax credits on the five hundred C R form when they submit their business or individual income tax returns to the Maryland Tom Troller. Tom Troller, and whereas the enterprise zone is an important incentive for the town to encourage existing businesses to expand and attracting new businesses to locate within the town. Whereas Cecil County is preparing to file an application with the State of Maryland requesting a ten-year redesignation of the Cecil County Enterprise Zone. And whereas the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton have conducted a public hearing regarding the redesignations or continuation of the town of Elton Enterprise Zone. And whereas the mayor and commissioners desire to support the application to be filed by Cecil County with the State of Maryland for the redesignation or continuation of the town of Elton's Enterprise Zone. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton that, one, the mayor and commissioners support the continuation of the existing enterprise zone and endorse the application to be filed by Cecil County with the State of Maryland for the ten-year redesignation of the Cecil County Enterprise Zone. And, two, the mayor and town administrator are authorized and directed to execute, attest to, and deliver all documents necessary or desirable to effectuate the continuation of the town of Elton Enterprise Zone set forth in this resolution. Three, copies of this resolution shall be sent to the Cecil County Executive, Cecil County Council, and Cecil County Economic Development Director. Four, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage, read in pass this Thursday of October twenty twenty five.
Very good, does anyone from the board have any questions or comments in regards to, uh, resolution R ten dash twenty twenty five?
No, I'm just glad it went through the calendar, yeah, thank you for doing that.
This is a, uh, public hearing, does anyone have anything to say, good, bad, or indifferent on resolution R ten dash twenty twenty five? Anyone on the Zoom meeting have anything good, bad, or indifferent to say about resolution R ten dash twenty twenty five? Hearing none, it is now six nineteen, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion to approve resolution R ten dash twenty twenty five redesignation of enterprise zones.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Gene, so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we got two more. Okay, so your next one is the town residential anti-displacement and relocation.
Relocation assistance.
Relocation.
Uh, both this plan and the, um, citizen participation plan, which is next, these, both of these documents are required to be updated, um, they, they usually expire in three to five years after we adopt them. They're required for the C D V G grant application.
Okay.
So the first one is residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan, and this has to do with, um, if whatever projects we are going to seek funding for through C D V G, um, and if persons will become displaced because of it, this is the, um, plan that we have to abide by if we are displacing people from their properties in order to, um, to afford the grant application, or the, the grant project. Uh, the property in question is an undeveloped piece of land that is basically those lawn. So there's no, and there's no displacement, but then we still have to adopt this updated plan.
Very good, so you need us to approve that plan?
Yes.
So do we have a motion to approve the town residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that plan? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, so now we got the citizen participation plan.
Yes, and this plan, um, is, is required in order to ensure the public is aware of our activities and grant application, um, and to encourage citizen participation in the process when we are applying for community development block grants.
Very good, um, is there a motion to approve the, I'm gonna call it the C P P of the C D V G?
I would, yeah, if you go, I will, I will so move.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on the C P P C D V G? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Gene.
You're welcome.
All right, Lou, you have a couple of items, uh, we next up is the renewal of the towing agreement.
Yes, we have two agreements with, uh, Cross Auto Body and also McNeil, trading as Purnell Auto Body. And, uh, these, uh.
Hello, could you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry, these contracts are good for five years, then they expire this year. Consequently, as that the board approves for renewal, uh, to the period twenty-five through thirty, another five-year extension of both contract. Uh, I have contacted both of the firms and there's no changes, they're requested to the existing contract. So I would just ask that the board approve both Kraus, Auto Body, and McNeil, and Purnell Auto Body, uh, for the two contract.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve Kraus Auto Body, Body and, uh, the Purnell Auto Body, uh, renewal of the towing agreements from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty?
So moved.
Second, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, well you got Artesian coming.
Artesian, the town is well aware that, uh, we have, uh, completed the initial construction of a interact between Artesian and Elton. First forty line, it's, uh, toward the boulevard, commonly known as Williams, uh, uh, Chevrolet, uh, and the easement that we have there. All the piping and, uh, vaults, valves, everything has all been completed. The only thing that's remaining is the telemetry, and we have, we'll have that done in a week, so. But we need to have this commencement, uh, authorized between the town and Artesian to commence this, uh, flow of waters through that soon as we hit our telemetry squared away. So I ask the board to approve the certificate of commencement so I can get it over to Artesian.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve the certificate of commencement with Artesian Water Maryland and the town of Elton?
So moved.
So a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, you know, I, I always wanted to just, uh, touch, I was never, I would tell you twelve years ago, I was one that was probably would sit up here and say, I don't know why we're doing so much with Artesian, why do we have to have these interconnects, and why do we have to do this? And I will tell you, I've learned a lot since then, and, uh, I will tell you, I think these interconnects are probably two of the most important interconnects that we have in our town. Uh, you know, recently, earlier in the year, early, I guess it was early last year, and actually a little later this year, uh, we were having some, uh, slight hiccups with the, uh, turbidity in the Elk Creek, and that caused the, uh, where we had to shut it down for a while. And if you don't have these interconnects, it really makes it tough that you can't produce the water that you need for your residents. And, uh, uh, I think the, the next challenge that we're gonna have is these P V O Ss that could be in some of our wells, uh, and, you know, we have to have those interconnects so that we can, if there's a hiccup, we'll be able to connect into them and bring more water into town. So that's my two cents anyhow. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Thank you, Lou, we'll go ahead. Very good, let's see, I got a few things here, um, uh, is Dan Hanley, oh, there's Dan. Hey, I, you were, you were hiding over there, Dan, hey, could you take a look at, uh, uh, I guess when we get into our paving contract next year? Maybe take a look at Kensington Ford's area, I heard out there today, I really didn't see any, uh, major problems, there's a couple of little spots. But, uh, I had a resident ask me during the fall fest if we could go out there and take a look, maybe you could give some type of assessment. Uh, the next thing I wanted to mention that, uh, Fall Fest, I thought was a huge success. Uh, I thought, uh, the Elton Alliance, uh, did a fantastic job, uh, uh, the weather certainly helped, but it was a great job. Uh, I, 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 I have to you, there you go. Very good, great success, I'm sure you'll probably wanna say something about it here in a little bit. Speed humps, uh, we sent a, uh, notice out to Patriots Glen on Thomas Jefferson Terrace, and it came back to where they were just a couple, uh, individuals short of a positive speed hump. And, uh, uh, it was being, uh, uh, Elton resident Dave Mahalas was campaigning hard to get that done, and when I was out at Patriots Glen, he was bringing me over members from, that lived on Thomas Jefferson that did not send their, uh, surveys in. But I can tell you with full confidence, there's more than enough to support the speed hustle in Thomas Jefferson. So I just wanted to let everyone know that the speed hustle in Thomas Jefferson, I think we've already talked about it, but I wanted to, uh, bring it up in a town meeting. There was more than enough support to make that happen.
So that support was with the additional names that they forwarded?
Yes, that's correct. And, uh, last Wednesday, we had a, uh, we, we brought back our landlord association meetings. Uh, it's not our meetings, but what it does is, uh, the room was full of, uh, the landlords that, uh, uh, rent properties in the town of Elton, so they were all here, most of them were here. And it gave us an opportunity to talk about everything from the new, uh, codes that are coming their way, uh, as well as, uh, we introduced them to our new code enforcement officer. Uh, and we also had Dan Hanley talk about, uh, the community cleanup days. But I think we're gonna get back to having that once a quarter, 'cause I think it really does bring, uh, us a little bit together where we can keep in touch with everyone. It works out pretty well. Uh, and lastly, the last thing that I have is I received an email from Reverend Ricardo Curry Burns, uh, representing the Elton Colored School Museum and Cultural Center, uh, asking for some support in a, in the form of a letter so that they could apply for a, uh, Maryland State Arts Council Capital Grant Program to help fund, uh, our Elton Historic Colored School. So I wanted to make the board aware that, uh, I, actually I would almost say, I'd like to ask the board for their support for me to sign this so that. I'd like to ask the board for their support for me to sign this, so that we can get the, show letter of support. Do we have a motion to, uh, support the Elton Colored School Museum and Cultural Center, uh, for this grant program? We have a mo-, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this?
No, Justin, just basically that, uh, Elton Colored School supposedly last year was gonna get a number of dollars to help with the project, that didn't come, so I guess in the meantime, he is currently seeking, and I guess in this instance, he's asking the town for some support in that endeavor.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, Jean, you have anything this evening?
Hmm, no, I also wanted to congratulate you on the Fall Fest, it was just wonderfully set up, and I just wish we could tell how many people were there.
We can, we just don't have the numbers yet.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'll have them. It'll, it'll probably take a month to show, but I'll win.
Did Sagerly do well, 'cause you have pride, but?
Yes, we did.
And lines galore, I saw that. Um, the only thing I wanted to ask you, talking about paving, did, Dan, didn't we, did we ever approve our parking lot out here to be either relined or repaved, something?
We can, we just haven't authorized, we just have an equity agreement yet, but we do have something in the budget, so.
We do, yeah, 'cause I'll tell you, even just trying to park, it's hard to see the lines, um, so I think it should, uh, be cleaned up.
Cleaned up, huh?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Perfect, Charles?
Alicia, I thought you said it was four thousand, you weren't fibbing, were you? But anyway.
What did it for, I don't know.
I don't know, both she and myself, and her compadre there, and Al were at the Vulcan Bank, Donna Hicks was there till he come and give the refreshments at the end. But, um, anyway, uh, they had a, a blue ribbon cutting ceremony, and that was more or less of them showing their commitment and sustainability, and what they would like to do as far as the town of Elton continues to convene, and, uh, it was about forty, fifty people there, a lot of them were bankers, and the, uh, adventure went very, very well. At the Fall Fest, there were two ladies, I guess, representing Southfield, uh, in reference to people signing up or learning more information about the apartments. I guess we never, I've got a chance to receive any information for all we've done to them in reference to that. Perhaps you could make that happen in a workshop?
Yep.
Because they were actually telling people that the rent there was nineteen hundred dollars, one bedroom. Then the ladies stated that because no one was signing up, they went back to fifteen-fifty, I guess, the starting, um, rent, and I don't know what happened since that time or even now, but certainly, well, we drive by or we see that, but certainly, for all the support and the love we've given them, we'd like to know something ourselves.
Very good, I actually stopped over there yesterday, and I, I went through that temporary road that there was a lot of discussion about, and actually, I kinda liked that temporary road, but we're gonna abide by what the, uh, uh, county would like us to do once the main intersection, uh.
I don't know, I, we can't keep that open for commercial purposes? If the, it's perfect for commercial.
I, I have to tell you, it was, uh, if everyone has an opportunity, you should drive through there, it's, it's really, I thought, a pretty decent road.
I know.
It isn't it?
It's decorated with flowers and probably the, those beautiful little roads.
It is.
And I, I was adamant that we shouldn't allow the traffic flow there, but, um.
Of the three hundred and thirty apartments that are built there, um, there are seven tenants so far.
Yeah, that's what she told me yesterday, yeah. Yeah, she, she told me that's seven, and she thought she had twenty other additional applications.
And what was that, seven, twenty?
She had seven in, and about twenty additional.
Yeah, I saw a bus go through, school bus. I don't think people are gonna use that, uh, once the boulevard's open, because it's not gonna do them any good to come through there just to go onto Whitehall Road to get to the light. You know, once that boulevard's open, they're gonna use that.
Yeah.
I talked to a tenant yesterday at Lent, and this particular tenant loved that because it's easy to get to Red Knuts.
Yes.
Uh, go over Gate Road, it's straight back without considering traffic.
Yeah.
So it has a very, uh, functional convenience for the people that live there, all seven tenants so far.
We need to talk about that. Okay.
And the last, I spoke with Alicia again last night, and gave her my bravos for the job that she actually gave in the town of Elton since my time on the board, I have to think that's been the largest crowd, and certainly, there were additional, uh, spaces that were available for members, and they certainly, uh, took advantage of that, and then there was also a lot of talk afterwards from the vendors stating that, uh, they did a great job, and Alicia also saw where you asked people who attended to give you feedback, looks like they're very good, and felt for the next time that you put this on, and she said, Rob, if she does well, maybe you can find her a place up here.
Well, there you go, there we go.
I'm done.
Earl?
Yeah, I also wanna thank the Elton Lions and the staff, I'm not getting names, but you guys have done a great job. I wanna give a, a personal thank you to the Elton Police Department, um, Chief, make sure you read latest, because I'm not too much emails sending, all that stuff out, but I was woken up around four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, um, Friday night, and just, uh, Saturday morning, got home late from, uh, Virginia, and my door acted up, so I opened the front door, opened the back door to get stuff out, closed the door, went in the house, went to sleep, I was so tired. And all of a sudden, my wife woke up, seeing all these police cars in the front yard, the lights shined on, and she said, Earl, get up, get up, I still wasn't awake yet, I walked out, my point is, police officer apologized, wake me up, and kicked me up out of bed, sorry for this, Commissioner, and I said, oh, there's no problem, I went in the house, I said, oh, you know what, I didn't thank them the right way, but personally, the police officer had no, um, idea how it feels to get up early in the morning, being, or working by lights and wondering what's going on, but thank you for their security, and from a next-door neighbor making a phone call for them to at least look and see if my car was broken into, because that, that's the whole point of this, was that car door was left open all night from the time I got home, but make sure you tell them, I said, thank you, um, Rob might send you some doughnuts or something, but I, I appreciate, appreciate their efforts for trying to at least make sure that no one broke into my vehicle, so thank you.
That's very good. Robert, I did you? No, I didn't.
No, I had nothing this week, but I would also like to, uh, congratulate the Lions, great job, definitely the best Fall Fest we've had. The weather, that was, that was a plus, but, uh, the amount of vendors, the amount of people, the way you guys laid it all out, utilizing every nook and cranny of the downtown area beautifully.
Now, also suggested to her that as it unfolds and get bigger, because you know when you do something and it does well, you wanna make it bigger, that this street here, North Street, years ago was part of the downtown Elton, so right now it's untouched. So you might wanna make it part of it, but, you know, that calls for great planning, that to be done.
There you go. Okay, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for, or, I always wanna say, for the good of the town of Elton, but I know that there's some folks from Patriots Glen would like to say a few words about what's happening over at Patriots Glen, so would you like to come up and have a seat? Or no, yeh, nay? Whoever wants to speak, or all of you, come on down and just tell us your name and your address for the record.
I'm J.T. Wilson, I'm at two thirty-eight Patriots, um, Way, and I think most of our concerns are, and we don't know how much of this is true and how much is false, because everything on social media is not always accurate, but, um, we were, it was posted on our Facebook page that we had three stolen cars in one night. We believe that they were targeted, we're not sure, one of our neighbors did follow, pursued his car being driven away. Something supposedly was thrown out of the car, and he hit a curb.
Yeah, later, Holly Wall on two forty-five Thomas Jefferson, later it was determined it was actually the people replacing his tire, so it was a bullet hole in his tire, so they did have, they were armed, at least in the car, in one of the getaway cars, and there is video of three assailants, two, three pushing and one, you know, steering the cars, they got away with one of them.
Which street was that on?
Well, one of them was on Thomas Jefferson, one was John Adams.
John Adams, yes.
And I don't know where the other one was.
It was a neighbor to Thomas, so two on Thomas and one on.
Now, we were told that the chase went through Maryland, Delaware, and to Pennsylvania, one of the cars was later found, and it had a gun in it, whether that's true or not, we don't know. We do know that another one of the neighbors did call the police a couple of days later after he found out what happened, and he said that one of the, uh, one of the thieves, um, did approach him, um, earlier in the day or so, so we don't know if they were scoping it out, or if it was something within the neighborhood, you never know, um, but we really are, I, I mean, our neighbors are a little concerned, we have a lot of older people in the neighborhood, so we wanna know basically, um, what can we do? We did, today, we did check the cameras up front to make sure that they were working, um, we got, we have that started, um, there was an issue with it, um, so we'll be checking them within the next two weeks to see how long we're holding, um, video and all, because they were not holding more than fifteen minutes at the time.
Okay.
But we wanna know, can we have more increased, uh, police presence within the neighborhood during the night?
And this is the season where we tend to see an uptick, we, we get videos from people's house cameras, where, um, individuals are checking the doors on cars and, and breaking into cars, and somebody always forgets to lock their doors, um, and, yeah, they should feel safe to have their personal property on.
I would agree, I agree. Chief, do you have any, uh, any some feedback for us, and, and maybe, uh, offer some suggestions for the team here?
Yeah, and we have been in contact too with Lieutenant Comper.
Perfect.
He's gonna come to our board meeting, um, next week, we, we just haven't told him he's gonna be there yet, but he said he was available, so.
Yeah, I had asked him, I saw, I'm a member of your Facebook group, and I'm told the concerns, and I had, I had to, so that, I, you know, welcome to come here and express to the board your concerns, um, but I think it's better if we kinda talk as a community, so I can hear all of the concerns from all of you, and then you can hear what our responses have been, and really know what the crime has been in your particular neighborhood. I'm aware of two on that particular night, and I do, I agree with you, I think they were probably targeted, um, and, uh, you are correct, there was a weapon found in it, or at least, we've been told that there probably was a weapon in it, Pennsylvania has some rear boss, and even if they see it, they have to give a search warrant, so they're waiting for us to put it in the system in order to get that search warrant, and I just haven't followed up to know, but I, I'm assuming that there was a weapon found in there as well. I'm gonna tell you, unfortunately, that's not uncommon, Elton's government has recovered so many weapons over the last five, in chief, for five years, it's, it's unbelievable. My officers were right around the corner when this happened, um, and had actually gave pursuit as well, and then they went over to Delaware, so we have, we have, um, you know, policy on that, but it's a crime against the property, so we have to kinda weigh the risk and, um, the liability to the town when we're pursuing across state lines, particularly when you're talking about a crime against property, and as opposed to whether somebody was shot at or killed or, you know, whatever, uh, it kind of raises that bar for us, so, but I know we had reached out to Delaware, and the Delaware authorities started pursuing, and we did go to Pennsylvania, so you're, you're correct on that, but, um, we're right in the area, we do know about some issues that have been happening up and around there, and I, what I can tell you is we are doing our absolute best, that all my officers are out there patrolling every night in all of these neighborhoods, and yours included. So, uh, there are certain things that you can do, crime prevention tips, right, like keep, make sure everything's locked up, if you have lights on, and get rid of anything that's around the house that, where somebody might be able to hide, uh, you see something, say something, call us, we're here all hours of the night, but you see somebody suspicious of your, if there's not one in that neighborhood, like you said, the one neighborhood, maybe you gotta talk to them or whatever, like call us, let us identify them, um, and a lot of these actors are coming from out of state, so I can tell you that we do have some cameras in town that are also attached and give us access to ones all the way across, uh, into Delaware in particular, so we're working really closely with our partners to try and deal with some of this. But we would be more than happy, I don't, didn't know that the meeting was totally set up, I thought that we'd probably come earlier, we'd probably try and come, but I know you said the elementary school.
But do you two have anything from?
I had a related, uh, respectful question. Recently, we've had high-speed tra-, uh, chases when Red Hill grew.
Yes.
Which one came out of town at three fifteen a.m. up Red Hill, and that person crashed their Cadillac, whose muddy lane? Now.
We also recovered a weapon, I don't know.
Okay, but I was wondering, because that was the a.m., had that been three fifteen p.m., that high-speed chase could have ended very, very badly.
I agree, and we actually have a matrix for our policy, and those are all the things that we have to take, and my supervisors that are working at that time have to take into consideration before they terminate that, so it would be the time of day, the volume of people, what's going on in the area, all of those things, that, you know, that raises that risk level for us, so those are all things that have to take into consideration.
Was, I guess my second part of that was, what constitutes, uh, high-speed chase? Is this just a theft, is it a murder, is what constitutes a pursuit by several officers who own vehicle, and it made me feel that that person was not familiar with the area since they did not make it through the muddy lane.
Yeah, well, it's a very dynamic thing, uh, and there's not a cut and dry answer, we weigh the risk with what the crime is, and what all these other factors are, the risk factors, and so it's, it's not cut and dry, but typically, we don't just pursue for something of property, maybe a crime, but when we do pursue, and it doesn't have to be high-speed, it could be any pursuit, like if anytime somebody's running red lights, I don't care if you're doing it forty miles an hour, it still elevates the risk for everybody involved. We don't want to put our public at risk, we don't wanna put our officers at risk, and we, we don't really, sometimes we do them out, we don't wanna put them at risk, right? But we have to balance that, so what's the, what's the law enforcement objective that we're trying to meet? Right, and so, if there's other ways, if we know who they are, if we can identify, unfortunately, when they come down, 'cause they came down in a rental car, they were all together, and I think an enterprise car that was rented out of somewhere, if we can identify them other ways, we're gonna have them back too.
So was the white truck part of that? 'Cause we saw in the video, it was a white box truck, so we saw in the video, we saw it come in, we saw it go out, but we weren't sure if that was part of that or not.
I know they had a particular vehicle, I don't know if it's a white box truck or not, I'm just not that familiar with it, so we can have all these answers for you when we do need to be, because I, I don't know, I'm coming out with Lieutenant Comper, and we're trying to have a, like, our, um, so in every shift, we have like certain sectors, so whoever's working that day that we have the speeding, whoever's in that sector, I'm gonna have them coming up too, because they're the ones who actively work that area, so it's nice to have that, um, one-on-one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is the camera at the front?
The guard.
And is that owned by the homeowners association?
The camera is the building, it's, Mike owns the building.
Okay, so.
We did.
How is the, does he, does it have a good system in it?
Well, we're not sure yet. There is been some.
But let's ask him, they'll only replace him.
The glove.
Ask him.
On it, yeah.
So we, we have somebody out there today from, actually, it was.
The company's name is Delco. Sorry, I, I had my hand raised, I don't know, I, I'm sorry. Ten and Quigley, two eleven, Thomas Jefferson as well, I also want to just mention, I am the president, the current president of the board for the HOA, um, sorry, I'm not able to make it there in person, um, I just wanted to jump in, not to cut anybody off, but we are currently looking into the camera system, for a while there, it was not working at all, um, we've recently found that it is working, but it's only holding very short amount of time, so we do have the company working with us to ensure that it is getting up to speed, and if it is not up to speed, that we are planning to, you know, make arrangements to get it to where it needs to be.
And so I would just say, one of the reasons I wanna have a meeting with the. And so I would just say, one of the reasons I want to have a meeting with the community itself is that you don't always want all of your stuff out there to the whole public, right? If you're looking at the D camera, whether it's working or not, the community members need to know. I don't need every criminal in this county.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Tell them what's working and not working. So those are some of the things that we like to talk about one on one.
Absolutely. I appreciate you offering to join Lieutenant Confer as well, uh, when we meet. I know Holly has been in contact with him and she is there tonight. Um, so maybe you can get together after the meeting or whatever, exchange information and update that. And then I do think that the community as a whole would benefit and be very happy as they get together with you outside of just the board. You know, just to further.
No, that'd be great. Thank you, Jenna.
You're welcome. I also, really quick, while I have y'all, I just wanted to thank you so much for taking consideration for the speed bump on Thomas Jefferson. And I hope that in the future, maybe we can look to do something further on the other end of Thomas Jefferson. Obviously, part by part, but I just wanted to thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
And we are evaluating other sites with camera systems. Some, some people in the community have made suggestions on, you know, cameras that are still low powered and all that stuff. So we're looking at that, but we're kind of waiting until we meet with Elton people.
You know, I, I'm like the chief, I don't want to say too much. Where it's live, of course, wherever we can hear what we're talking about. But I would also say, you know, as I'm going down I ninety-five now and you have the, uh, uh, construction areas and they always have that police car there to take your picture and they zap you. Even if they're not in it, there's like a little blinking light that shows you that they're in that area. And guess what people do? They slow down. So sometimes a visual, maybe in that clubhouse would show like there's something actively taking a picture of me at all times, right? Might also.
Yeah.
Any, any other comments? I think we, we got a game plan. We're all gonna meet and go from there. Thank you. Thank you guys so much for coming in. I, thank you. Thank you. Single, you have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton?
No. Right, the vice president and the chief up. So it's a pleasure to be here and see everybody again. We wanted to follow up. Obviously, we've been working together for about five years now, trying to talk about where we're going as a company and to serve the needs of the community. And, uh, in August, um, came up with a couple, couple different ideas from the town about funding and trying to help us move forward. Uh, we've been looking at that internally, uh, and actually we're, uh, in discussions with Tyler to sit down and meet go through the, the numbers and process and, and see which option may be the most viable. However, there's some other things that have come up in, in process that we want to include as we're stacking. So as we look at going through the process, we know that the last two years, um, we have had a deficit in our budget. Our fiscal year concludes December thirty-first. We run on a calendar year. Part of our discussions have been, we need a funding solution for the coming fiscal year that starts January one. So that's kind of our deadline for making a decision as to what's coming before we look at contingency plans to address the issues. In the process, uh, we've ordered a ladder truck about three years ago. As you know, it's quite a long process. And preparing for, to take delivery of that next fiscal year, we started looking for loans to, to finance the unit. Uh, the total cost of a ladder truck, uh, is just under three million dollars. So in the loan looking process, you know, we worked with Fulton Bank and some other lenders. In the discussions in the past couple of weeks, it's come to our attention in the process that because of the reason that we're working with you, the look at funding is we don't have the income. And we're not gonna get approved for a loan for a ladder truck. So we need to drive down and determine where we're going with our funding initiative with the town in order to sustain a loan to pay for that unit that we're due to take delivery of.
How long do you finance it? How long could you finance a ladder truck for?
So we, in the loan process that we're looking at, uh, we were looking at terms greater than ten years.
Okay.
And so the commercial loans, obviously, whatever the interest rate is, that's what we get. So as we look to that meeting, again, we're working with Tyler. We have to sit down soon. He's been working on audit for you guys. Uh, once they get closed out, we're gonna come in, sit down and walk through the numbers. Um, and then have some more discussions internally. Uh, but we want to make sure that you knew about the loan status. Cause that, that really puts us in a, in a tighter spot. We already knew that we needed funding, a funding solution by this fiscal year. But that really adds in something that we weren't anticipating either. Uh, what we would like to do is, uh, have our meeting, uh, with Tyler and the team and, and work through those numbers and have a discussion here with the, with the team at the November evening meeting.
That'd be good.
And our goal is we want a decision on where we're going, um, by January first. Cause we're in our budget cycles also and depending on where things go, we may need to make some tough decisions.
Tyler, you'll be able to determine what the amortization would be on a ladder truck for financing purposes? What, what we need to have that for that?
First of all, enter.
Yeah.
And, and period, any of the period of amortization for individuals.
Very good. So we'll have that. You guys will work together. We'll have that information. But I think that those are the things that we could, I believe that we can help with.
In what way?
Well, either, you know, you know, you're looking at, uh, you know, I, I don't know what debt number is per month. Is it like thirty thousand a month?
Uh, the payment, payments would run roughly, the, what we got from the bank was probably around a hundred eighty thousand a year. So.
So one eighty, so fifteen thousand? Fifteen thousand dollars a month. Hundred and eighty thousand, but you know, we're gonna help supplement Singley Fire Company, but this would be one great way to do it, in my opinion. But we have to, we'll, we'll, Dan says numbers in November. And you guys need to know for December.
Yeah, cause like I said, you know, we knew that we were two years into deficit. We know that, that, that problem has been continuing to grow unless we find a stable year-over-year solution, which is what we've been talking about. But this ladder truck variable now enhances that impact and we, we need some other adjustments as well, so. Uh, we want to put it on the radar and let you guys know so you can start thinking about it. Um, and then we can sit down with Tyler and work through the numbers. We'll put it in our projection files. We'll be on our numbers with you, with the three different models. We have a modeling for all three options that you guys proposed and all this. So we can sit down and work at those both short and long term. And, uh, have something that we can present at the November meeting. And then the December evening meeting and final decision on which path you guys want to go and that way we have it for our budget approval process in January.
Listen, I think we, we absolutely understand that we have to help Singley Fire. Uh, you know, we've talked about that time in and time out. We've just got to figure out how we do it. But I think this is, this is actually pretty digestible to me. Charlie, you can raise that kind of money for us.
Oh, it's your help.
Have, have, have you exhausted all means of brands? Or you would need help? I don't, I don't.
So, so grant wise, we, we do leverage grants for a number of projects. We typically leverage grants for, one, for new projects that we want to launch. Sometimes we're successful in grants and sometimes we aren't. We also leverage grants as budget offsets. Uh, there are some grants that are continuously available to us for us to offset some, some different big purchases that we have. Uh, from SCBA, for example, um, we have to look to replace our breathing apparatus we use when we're, go into fires. Just, um, that's, that's a large dollar sum, um.
Within the next five, within the last five years.
I mean, we're probably talking another, probably half a million dollars for that alone. So nothing is cheap in our business, so that's why trying to balance evasion things, get the grants that we can get. We've been leveraging as, as much as possible and actually, to be frank, if you look at our budget over the last twenty years, that has kind of sustained us and kept us from reaching that tip over point before last year. And keeping our, our budget solvent to this point.
Have you had any better luck with your annual drive?
So our drive itself seems to have leveled off. One of the, the big things for me, looking at it from a numbers and administration guy, is businesses in town, in town, and our businesses, twelve percent donating to the fire company. Twelve percent. And I know we have a lot of great businesses here, you know, they get showcased and, and all the lines of events and everyone coming together and supporting each other. It's fantastic. But twelve percent of businesses donate to us that are in our district. The residents. Uh, the residents that we have, I mean, some are very generous and, you know, we changed, changed how we did our on-drive a couple of years ago. And we've had some very good responses. Uh, we even did a special mailer a couple of years around the end of the year, uh, around tax season time. And we did get some extra, extra funds, you know, around twenty-five thousand dollars or so from those special drives. But there's only so much that people can ever purchase soon. Especially in today's environment with everybody's costs and managing their families. So that's why we've tried to work on grants as much as possible, um, and leverage those. But sustainability, we need funding streams. And, and the funding stream from the town is, right now is the one that hasn't kept up with inflationary costs, so.
Currently, we're equally short and, and, uh, fill those, those employment slots. So that's services that we're not able to provide. And then it's picked up on mutual aid. Hopefully, they're not busy as well where they're coming from. So, um, so we're just at that point.
I understand.
So, you know, when we talk about the January first budget for us, depending on what that additional funding the town is able to do and the proposals that are on the table, we may need to adjust, you know. Can we keep all three stations open? Do we need to close a station to, to manage things? Do we need to not fill those eight positions that are vacant? You know, and, and again, if we don't fill them, we're already short. You know, I talked, last meeting I was here, uh, we went from being supplemented by Cecil County, the county EMS service, twelve percent of the time. And it jumped to twenty-five percent of the time because of volume and staffing. Where if we don't fill those eight positions, now the county is gonna supply more service inside the town of Elton. And when they do that, it takes away from the rest of the county.
The addition is, is, is retention. We're not able to keep up with the current, uh, trajectory of wages. So our paramedics, for instance, are getting cherry picked, uh, if that's a better term. And we're down currently to, we'll be down to three paramedics on all shifts. So that'll be a BLS unit. So now, well, we're gonna rely even more have your own county to come in and, and for ALS calls and, and such, so, uh, it's mission critical at this point.
It's just like, you know, uh, the police department or the chief and the town, you know, target and retain officers here and, and adjust pay scales and all those things. We're looking at that and talking about budgets, we said that we're in a deficit, but we can't necessarily.
Compete?
Compete and we can't do an adjustment until we have a, a locked-in plan of increase, a sustained funding stream to be able to do that. So there are a lot of things that are coming to a, coming to a head here to move their dress and um, we, we need answers and come up with them with you guys.
Well, I've got you on the agenda, November fifth.
I'll bring a, a little tip to the town, uh, prior to last week, we had a working fire in Fairland, Fairhill area at the, uh, the historic, uh, inn up there. And at the same time, we had a, a second conditional working fire in Hogsworth Manor. Uh, our mutual aid companies from Delaware, uh, mutualized it into there. We had, uh, three firefighters burned from, uh, Newcastle County. Uh, their gears were ruined, uh, lost the thermal imaging camera, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, we're doing everything we can, but I just want to bring that up to you guys too, so that lets you know the incidents in our, in our district and keep you guys informed.
Listen, thank you guys, continually for everything you do. No question about that. Thank you.
Uh, we do want to thank, uh, the Parks and Rec team. Uh, we partnered with Maryland Shock Trauma and the Parks and Rec team. Uh, we had September ninth, we had the Stop the Bleed training that I talked about at the August meeting. Uh, we had sixteen folks from the town. Town residents that came, uh, we also had our youth program, our service learning program from the firehouse. We had, uh, those children come and attend as well. Uh, it was a great event. Uh, they all got to take home a Stop the Bleed kit. So if anyone started bleeding at home, they got a tourniquet, they knew how to, to bandage a wound. Uh, it, it was a great outreach program. Uh, the fall test, as everybody says, they passed it. Um, I brought my family. It's had a great time. I enjoyed the food. Um, but it was great. Our fifty crew, they phenomenal. It's the one thing you look forward to every year out of all the events. So like, okay, fall test, fall test, do some of the fall test. And then we also announced our trunk or treat, which I know has, uh, become a big hit with the line all the way down through the library towards Gilpin Manor. Um, so make sure you've got that on your calendars. Um, and, uh, we look forward to seeing everybody, bring your families there.
Isn't it?
This is also Fire Prevention Month, so our fire, uh, Fire Prevention Team will be out in the, in the schools in our district, uh, providing, uh, a lot of ventilation to the children.
Uh, the trunk or treat is October twenty-fourth at the firehouse. I shared the, the flyer on our Facebook. I think that tagged the alliance and the town in it, but we'll be resharing and circulating again.
What a time, you know?
It started at five.
I can look it up.
I, I should have it on top of my head. I apologize.
Actually starts.
But, uh.
Five to eight thirty.
Five to eight thirty. So if anyone has a trunk they want to offer and offer, the police usually come and, and come to the partners', uh, hospital that was here, they, they've had a trunk there before. I think the rotary folks have been there before, so anybody else wants to bring the trunk and hand it out to them or candy, we're more than happy to have them.
Very good.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Nice to us. Okay, Alicia? Come on down or if you stand up.
I'll stand up. Um, so both of us was okay, I guess. Uh, thank you guys for, for all the comments and the support. Yes, we do surveys out to all the vendors and to attendees every single year, at least since I've been here. I started that to get feedback, to get comments for making it better each year, so we appreciate everything that comes back from that. Um, so both of us is wrapped, in our rearview mirror. Uh, we are looking at the Halloween parade now and one question I have for the board is we decided today, based on some feedback from last year's event, again, we do surveys out every year, that the, um, attendees and the participants, participants and the spectators seem to think it's a little small. Meaning it's just too short. And so as to not create too much havoc, um, a couple of weeks out, we would like to, instead of just going, um, out of the back of the courthouse and make a left on North Street, go up to Bow Street and come in front beside the hospital and then go up Main Street. So, um, from a road closure standpoint, Stan, E T D, um, I don't know what we, I know we put all our requests in in December, January for the full year, so this would be, uh, uh, an amendment that we want to go straight up and make a left onto Bow and come down Main. So I don't know what requirements I would have to get that through.
I'll make the idea.
All the way up Singley? Okay.
Listen, I think we'll be okay with anything. It's just gotta get it worked out.
Okay, so just put something in writing.
You guys okay with it? Yeah, get it worked out with the chief and, and Dan and fire company and.
Okay, I will do that. Um, and then Judge Stan, they got ran over last year, um, so, and if we change the route, we're gonna change where the judges stands are just slightly, um, just to create a better visual for the judges.
They got ran in.
Yeah, Big Tractor Trailer ran over two of them and shattered them when they were on our corner the week after the event. Um, and then the only other thing I want to say is that we have, well, Friday is Elton Alumni Night and we have this wonderful band that's playing Friday night. Do you know who that is? Are you familiar with that band?
Bob Murphy calls them the grub worms.
I think they are.
They're fixed to the club and I cross.
So they'll be playing Friday night. Thank you, Rob. Um, we are participating in the Cecil County Cecil Cares Program this year for the first time. I wanted to incorporate the Elton Alliance into that work and we're doing. I wanted to incorporate the Elton Alliance into that work and we're doing a downtown cleanup. Um, I know I shared it with the board weeks ago, but I just wanted to publicly, publicly say that we are doing that. We're very excited. We have a lot of volunteers for that. Thank you to CPW, they're gonna be bringing us trash bags, gloves, scrappers and things like that for the event on Saturday morning. If anybody's downtown and they want to come help us clean up downtown, we'll be here.
Very good.
Nine to eleven.
Thank you.
You gonna share your idea?
Uh, actually, uh, Rob had a uh, pretty good idea about painting some angel wings on the box, right?
Yeah, so we've been talking about ways that we can incorporate more art downtown. That's been certainly something I've, I've been wanting to do. And with Rob being our resident artist, he's taken on the opportunity to um, paint some bat wings on the area in front of the Elton Alliance, um, as well as maybe a room that we can basically simulate people being on it um, for the Halloween season, and then we will change it out with the season.
So one, love it. Love that idea. And uh, during Fall Fest, as Singerly was pulling out the uh, leaving, there was a couple of folks up against the wall of the Elton Music Hall getting their photo taken. And it immediately looked, looked like to me, if we could put some beautiful elk antlers right on that wall, that would be a great spot. If we could get the Elton Music Hall, they could even have their name on it, right? It'd be a great place for a selfie picture.
So we have, um, we have looked at lots of opportunities. I've already talked to one building owner on Main Street about an additional mural. So definitely having conversations with them around the area. We did a little bit of a walkthrough and kind of said, where can we put these things? Because I know other municipalities are having great experiences with people being able to take selfies with umbrellas and things like that, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else have any? Yes, ma'am. You didn't tell me your name last time.
Darling Grace.
And your, I know. And your address?
Uh, my address, um, in Patriots, uh, Glen.
Okay.
Patriots Glen.
That's perfect. That's fine, that's fine.
I have an unrelated question respectfully. And I just wanted to know, what happens to some of these properties that are burned out and uh, in core repair for kind of a long time? How long does it take for insurance to finally say, hey, it's been over a year? It's been two years. And in particular, like we, we have the Tiger House on, if you're familiar, on that street. And a couple of other places. I mean, you can see that other property owners are working very hard to restore their properties. In fact, two doors down is beautiful Victorian house. Where they.
Did a great job.
It looks spectacular. But then two doors down, you have a burned out house. How long can somebody have it looking like that before you say, hey?
Well, you know, that's a great question. And, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I will tell you that uh, we changed uh, an ordinance for the Tiger House about two months ago. Uh, and what it was in regards to, so with that house burning down the way it did, and if you had to build it back to the day's code, it would have had to been, the setback would have had been further back. So we changed our ordinance so they could build it back in the same footprint. Sounds a little crazy, but that's the way we had to change it. But I think that they are actively ready to move forward on that, on that property. But when I went by today, I was actually gonna mention to our, um, to Chip, who's our uh, head of our inspections, that it kind of looked like that one little uh, area looked like it was getting a little loose up there at the top, which worries me a little bit also. But we'll get you a firm answer on that. But you know, like the old Minnehans building is still kind of sitting vacant, but I will also tell you that they have secured it from a uh, uh, safety standpoint for the people that are walking through. And then on the twenty-third of October, uh, the, we're meeting with the uh, owner of that building and he's gonna talk about his plans a little bit. So things are moving. They don't move, they don't move very fast, I can tell you that. Anyone else tonight?
Excuse me, I think Chip might be on, online.
Chip, is that you? That ain't Chip. Yeah, I see a hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, uh, the, the Tiger, the, uh, that house on Delaware, on uh, West Main Street is slated to be demoed. We're just waiting for some final approvals. Uh, it probably within two weeks, we will have those and they will be uh, demolishing the house.
Perfect, that's gonna be exciting. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Angelo.
Good evening. Quick question for you, um, that house that Singerly was just talking about in Hollinsworth Manor, that house has been fifty seven, uh, seventy, fifty-eight, has been vacant for a number of years. It's already collapsed, before the fire, but sorry guys, uh, good job with it, but sorry somebody got hurt. And are there any plans to maybe while they're knocking down the Tiger House, you can get that crew up in Hollinsworth Manor and tear that down?
Well, I can tell you, uh, Louis has already been on it. He asked for uh, some funding to make that happen. If we make it happen, then we're gonna have to lean to property. So we were actually seeing if there's, Chip was checking in to see if there is a way that we could acquire that property first and then go ahead and remove it. And if I could have, uh, uh, if I knew I was gonna be here for twelve years, I, I wish I would have been able to buy five houses in Hollinsworth Manor each year that were bad and, and demolish them and, and uh, we've been sixty down, quite frankly.
Let's start now.
We can, we can put a C I P together. Thank you, Angelo.
And also, very good on the Fall Fest, wonderful job. The sandwiches, for Singerly, amazing. And Dan and his team has done a wonderful job in Hollinsworth Manor again, again, again.
And again. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.